Thanks, and welcome to the Wednesday, December 20th, 2023, Meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. I call this meeting to order. And we'll start with a roll call of commissioners. Commissioner Woodyear.
Present.
Commissioner Van Nyman.
Present.
Commissioner Chaffrin.
Present.
Commissioner Nueva Camina.
Present.
Vice Chair Weston.
Present.
I'm Chair Sherri Nichols, and Commissioner Aparna is excused. She's out of the country. Glenn, do we have staff? Okay, we'll get that. While we're gathering that, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And we have a couple of meeting minutes to be approved, the November 15th, 2023, and the December 6th, 2023. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Somebody want a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right. Then we have several people signed up to give a comment during our items from the audience. We take a public comment on any item that is not the subject of a public hearing. You'll have about three to five minutes. And we'll start with David Morton. Please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm David Morton, 19934 Northeast Union Hill Road, Redmond 98053. The Overlake Incentive Program includes a green building category which awards high incentive points for several green building incentive options, including building a mass timber pilot project, building fully electric buildings, taking water conservation measures in buildings, and a watershed protection or enhancement project. Building with mass timber offers numerous benefits. First and foremost, it contributes to sustainability by utilizing a renewable resource, wood, which reduces carbon footprint. Mass timber structures are also quicker to construct, saving time and costs. These buildings promote a healthier indoor environment as wood naturally regulates humidity and provides a warm aesthetic. Additionally, mass timber construction enhances fire safety because fire chars the outer layers, forming a protective layer. Overall, embracing mass timber not only aligns with eco-friendly principles but also presents practical and aesthetic advantages in modern construction. Buildings powered entirely by electricity offer a range of benefits while contributing to sustainability and energy efficiency. Firstly, they significantly reduce reliance on fossil fuels, leading to lower carbon emissions and mitigating climate change impacts. Including renewable energy sources on the electric grid further enhances their environmental benefit. Fully electric buildings play a crucial role in the transition to a cleaner energy grid. Secondly, fully electric buildings are often equipped with advanced energy management systems and smart technologies. These systems optimize energy consumption, providing cost savings and operational efficiency. With innovations like heat pumps and electric appliances, they offer a more comprehensive and sustainable solution for heating, cooling, and other energy-intensive needs. Fully electric buildings improve indoor air quality by eliminating onsite combustion, promoting healthier living environments. They also contribute to grid resilience by enabling demand-response strategies, balancing energy consumption during peak times. Incentivizing and adopting fully electric buildings aligns with a broader commitment to a greener, more sustainable future. Fully electric buildings address environmental concerns and support technological advancements and economic opportunities associated with the growing clean energy sector. As we strive for a carbon-neutral future, fully electric buildings stand as a pivotal component in creating more sustainable and resilient urban spaces. Implementing water conservation measures in a building is vital for sustainable resource management. Low-flow fixtures such as faucets and toilets significantly reduce water consumption without compromising functionality. Installing sensor-based systems ensures water is used only when needed, minimizing waste. Gray water recycling repurposes non-potable water for irrigation, further reducing demand on freshwater supplies. Educating occupants on responsible water usage completes the conservation effort. These measures not only contribute to environmental stewardship but also lead to cost savings, making water-efficient practices a win-win for both the building's sustainability and its economic efficiency. Watershed protection in urban areas is critical for safeguarding water quality and biodiversity. Implementing green infrastructure like permeable pavements and green roofs helps manage stormwater runoff, preventing pollutants from reaching surface water bodies. Riparian buffer zones along urban waterways act as natural filters, preserving water quality and providing habitat for wildlife. Strategic land use planning helps minimize impervious surfaces, ensuring sustainable water flow. Community engagement and education promote responsible waste disposal and conservation practices, fostering a collective commitment to watershed enhancement. By integrating nature-based solutions within urban planning, cities can ensure the resilience and health of their watersheds, creating a sustainable balance between urban development and environmental preservation. Both the Overlake Incentive Program and the final environmental impact statement look pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. For the record, Katie Kendall, 701 Fifth Avenue, Seattle. I'm here today to talk about the housing regulations and proposals. So today, I just kind of want to step back and try to talk through some context of all the multiple reports that you guys have been seeing and really try to make sense of it because I've spent the last few days trying to make sense of it myself. So what the city is doing now is they're using kind of a hybrid analysis, using some data from the CAI report, some data from the Eco Northwest report, and then ARCH is using its own data to come up with this benefits ratio that discusses the value to developers and not the cost of the regulations or the financial feasibility of development. And that's critical that they've shifted this to a value to the developer. And that's really not the right question. That's the question you ask when you're trying to legally justify the proposal to not cause a taking. The question that we should be asking is will this proposal result in housing and affordable housing? And the answer was no when the city was proposing 10% if the unit's at 50% AMI, and it remains no at 12 and 1/2%, or the 15% that was in the proposed code at 50% AMI. The only difference is the housing will take a little bit longer to become feasible under this new proposal. So let's talk value. So what are developers getting? On paper, it looks like we're getting a lot, right? But in reality, developers are effectively getting the same thing they can already build under the current code. Currently in Overlake, a developer can develop eight stories under the current code using some incentives, which are onerous but doable. Projects generally do not build the base project right now, which is five stories. That's what CAI looked at, and that's what ARCH was looking at as its baseline scenario as well. Most projects in Overlake are averaging at least 300 units and are typically eight stories. What CAI looked at was 87 units and five stories, and similar to ARCH as well. Everyone agrees that building more than eight stories right now is not feasible, so having 14 or 20 stories is great one day, but right now, it's not feasible. And what the new code, it doesn't require incentives to get to eight stories, which is great, but it also has shifted some of those incentive requirements, like green building and the like, to a requirement. So really, it's about the same to get to eight stories under the current code and to get to eight stories under the future code, just to make sure that everyone is level set on that. And then, so the next question is, is development under the current code feasible in today's environment? And really, I think it depends on who you ask. It really depends on the developer, the time that they got their financing or looking to get their financing, and the deal structure in the project. Some projects probably can go through, some can't, just, you know, I think we're all on the same page there. But I think overall, it's either feasible or is pretty close to feasible if there's just a slight uptick in the economic environment. And the Eco Northwest model actually says that podium development at seven stories and around 250 units is the only product that is viable under today's economic conditions. So even the city's report says that that is viable right now. Eco Northwest, interestingly, also analyzed the impact of 10% of the units at 50% and 16% of the units at 50%. They weren't using the metric that ARCH was using in terms of the return. They were just looking at the impact on the residual land value, and the impact of both of those was significant to the residual land value there. So I encourage you to kind of try to look at all those reports in context and see how they can be reconciled, if they can be reconciled. So finally, and then I'll get off of here, what did ARCH compare? So what they compared was a project using the base FAR and the base height under the current code versus a project using the base FAR and the base height under the future code. That makes sense, except for everything I just told you about the eight stories versus eight stories. That is when we're looking at viable development. And their analysis actually shows that the yield on cost actually improves by imposing the more onerous affordable housing requirements. That doesn't make sense and is only the case because they're comparing the wrong projects. What you need to compare is what is the impact of affordable housing regulations on an eight-story building versus an eight-story building? What does that affordable housing regulation do to development if the goal is to get affordable housing and to see if development is feasible under these regulations? And I think I'm going to end there. To shift topics really quickly, there are new regulations in the Overlake zone regarding kind of grandfathering projects that are in the process. We just started looking at that, so I'd ask you not to close the written comments on the public hearing for that since there's a brand-new provision to look at. So I just request that that stay open so we have time to absorb and provide comments on that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Mike Hubbard, 8463 West Mercer Way, Mercer Island. I'm with Capstone Partners. We developed the Estera Park project in Overlake, so I'm very familiar with the housing ordinances that you guys are staring at. And what I want to talk about is the difference between what we've done out there, the 10% and 80% versus what is being proposed, which I understand to be 12 and 1/2% and 50% of AMI. And I don't think it works. I think, well, I think it's a bad idea. So here's why. So at Estera Park, we dealt with affordable housing in two ways, right? First, well, at the core of it, we felt it was an important component of the project. And so most of the projects out there were built 10% at 80%. With the exception of Capella, which was 100% affordable, right? So top to bottom, that was an affordable project. We felt that was a super-important element. And what we found, what we found when we actually executed at the project level is that the projects that do 10% and 80% are, in case Verde, we did 10% at 60%, those projects are just fundamentally not equipped to help those residents with the support that they need. The Capella project, which is top to bottom affordable, they actually have a completely different staffing model, and they have resources for those residents which help those residents navigate their lives, more than just renting an apartment, right? That's really, if you look at all the other apartments at Estera Park, they're run by, you know, big national management companies, and what those companies do is they just provide housing. And what those residents need is far more than housing. We had individuals in Verde, I think that our turnover is double than it is at Capella because we just don't have the services that these folks need. One of our individuals lived in one of the units, had clothing and bags, a mattress on the floor, lit his unit on fire, and really could have hurt himself or his neighbors. And we're just not equipped for it, right? So, and that's at 60%. So if you go to 50% AMI, it just becomes even more challenging, right? We just can't, we're not equipped to hire people to navigate that. So I just think that that's a very difficult model to implement. The other thing that, and Katie talked about, is the math. You know, right now, to get a project out of the ground, yield on cost is about 4%. And you need a 6% yield on cost in order to make that work. And with the affordable housing, at 50%, at 12 and 1/2%, that 4% goes to 3.6, 3.7, right? So we're going, you know, really, really the wrong way. And the big problem, I think, for Redmond is going to be that the other cities aren't doing this. And so if you're looking to supply housing stock, which is ultimately the best way to hold rents down, is to have lots of supply. If Bellevue's not doing this, and Kirkland's not doing this, and Snohomish County's not doing this, and Renton's not doing this, then the next dollar of investment isn't going into Redmond, it's going into all the communities adjacent to Redmond because the math is better in those cities. So I would encourage you to leave the program the way that you had it. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to note for the record that we also got comment via email from Hank Myers and And I want to recognize that we have in the meeting staff members who've extended their workday, Becky Frye, Jeff Churchill, Seraphie Allen, Ian Lefcourt, Lauren Alpert, Chris Wyatt, Glenn Coyle, and Jenny Lieback. We appreciate their being here to staff us tonight. Okay. Now we'll move on to Redmond 2050 Green Building Program and Overlake Incentive Package Study Session. Jenny Lieback, Becky Frye, and Lauren Alpert.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jenny is online, so she's here this evening. So this evening, we are available to answer any questions or go. If you need any additional information or response to the comments, we'd be happy to provide, but the intent for today is just to go through your issues matrix. We did get a couple of questions that came in from Commissioner Woodyear on Monday. We have added them at the end. We didn't get answers to all of them put in there, but we can at least get started with that. Okay, I'll go ahead and shoot the screen. And the first set of questions are about the green building program, so I'll let Jenny take over.
Great. So the first question from Commissioner Aparna was just about Appendix M and its application only to multifamily projects, and a question as to whether that should be leveraged for other building types. And just wanted to note that, you know, this is a standard that's established by the Uniform Plumbing Code, and it is for multifamily units only. And so we are just looking for the planning commission's direction as to whether you would like us to extend the requirements of Appendix M to other use types beyond multifamily or set kind of a threshold, which I think is what Commissioner Aparna was requesting here as well.
Commissioner Aparna is not here tonight. Does anybody else have any thoughts? I mean, what would be the implications of going beyond the Uniform Plumbing Code, I think would be one question?
Yeah, I bet that is something we would need to look into. I don't, I'm not a Uniform Plumbing Code expert, so it's really something we can't look into, though.
Does anybody have any thoughts on this? Go ahead.
So I sort of, I'm disappointed she can't be here tonight because I really actually would like to hear her go through these in person, so I don't know if it's possible to leave them open until she's back.
Yeah, we can leave these issues open and just come back to them.
Right.
But if you want to discuss them or add to them at this point, or need Jenny to go out and provide some additional research, that would be helpful tonight.
I mean, I guess on this one, I would like a better understanding of what the pros and cons are of, you know, what would be the cost-benefit here of going beyond multifamily on this? And is it something that we would want to try to do as part of Redmond 2050, or is it something that would be better punted to later?
My understanding for Schedule M specifically is that it's not, like, you don't really reap the reward in a single-family situation? Like, the benefit is when you have, like, a larger program or like a larger building and then...
Yeah, I mean, Aparna talks about commercial mixed use here, so...
Right. I could be wrong, but that was just my understanding. The one that I wanted to really jump in on is number four. I would love to see sub-metering specifically called out. That came up in a previous meeting, and I just want to make sure it makes it in. She called out separate water metering for each flooring unit, and that can be pretty expensive, but sub-metering isn't, and you still get the same benefit. It can be done with a combination of just like tiny, like, you're not changing the entire billing. Like, it's not like each apartment gets their own dial that goes to the city of Redmond and like handles the billing that way. It's just a way of measuring each unit or, like, group's water usage. And it's, you can absolutely do it as a retrofit, it's just one of those things, it's really easy to bake in. And with the huge expected population increase, I think it's something we'd appreciate even in the next few years, let alone in '30.
Jenny, did you want to respond to the concept of the sub-metering?
Yes, and I'm looking through, just to make sure, because actually, so, agreed, and we can absolutely add that in. And I thought I had included some draft language.
It was in number two.
Oh.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, it's in multiple places.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I was, I'm just looking for it. And yeah, so I did, yeah. So yeah, it's at the very bottom underneath the table, and so I've proposed some language, there we go, right there, in the italics, so that, agree, yes, then proposing that as a three-point optional technique for that.
And to be clear, I'm not in favor of separate metering because that's just really expensive. That says that, like, each apartment has their own relationship with the city of Redmond's water department, and that's expensive. What's a lot easier is if each building has the connection with Redmond, and then within that, they divide water billing. So everyone's still responsible for their own usage, they're paying based on what they use, which is nice, that really helps for water conservation. Like, water usage tends to go down 10 to 15% when people feel personally like they are paying for what they are using. But it's not, like, we don't necessarily need to say each individual is billed by, there's so many companies to do it, or the HOA can wrap it up in an ownership situation. But it's just, if you have that metering, then you can make, like, you can actually go in, divide up the bill appropriately, everyone gets their share, and people pay for what they use.
Is there a different language that you would propose here that would help clarify that point?
I would use the vocab word "sub-metering."
Okay.
Not "separate metering," because that's a different thing, I believe.
Yeah, and she does have "sub-metering" in the...
Yeah, I saw Commissioner Aparna's comments said "separate metering" and "multiple" on number two and number four, and I just, I don't think that's, I think that's too much
Any other thoughts or conversations around the proposal around water conservation? And to be fair, she sent several emails, and we were trying to nuance the changes that she wanted to make to the green building program, which is citywide, and then what she wanted to make changes for the Overlake piece. So that's the reason why it does appear twice.
Right, got it. On number five, she wanted mandatory minimum requirements for commercial uses with high-intensity water uses. Is, will zoning allow in Overlake, is this Overlake or citywide, I guess?
This was in the Overlake.
Will there be zoning allowances for, I guess data centers could happen in Obad.
You could do a data center. Obviously, we have Microsoft there, they could have a building with a data center in it.
Yeah, because I just...
I mean, there won't be a golf course in Overlake, but...
Right, I wouldn't think the golf course would be applicable in the zoning. Go ahead.
Another one to add to that would be any sort of, like, urban farming. I don't see that necessarily coming up, but if we were very concerned, that might, I'm not sure I'd necessarily agree with the concern here, but...
Time to think about, we do have, in the incentive program, community gardens. Obviously, there's water use for those, yeah.
Yeah, I think this is more if someone were doing it on a commercial basis.
Commercial, yeah.
Indoor.
Indoor vertical farming, like, that sort of.
Yeah.
I'll have to go back in and take a look and see what the...
I mean, I'm not sure this is a pressing issue right now, but...
I kind of feel like the market's going to take care of it. Like, I don't think Overlake is where you would necessarily run that business.
Right.
Yeah, in the larger use chart in 2104, they list agricultural uses, but in Overlake itself, we did not have agricultural. So I'll have to go back and look at 2104 and see how that interfaces with an urban environment. But it might not be something that's within the scope right now, it might be something we would just look at later.
Yeah. I don't, I don't really see any of these happening in the near term in Overlake, not even a data center, just because it's not the type of place where data centers go in, cheaper electricity.
I mean, there might be some type of integration. A building may want to do some type of vertical gardening opportunity for tenants, but I don't think it would be at a commercial volume, yeah.
I mean, the water concern would be on the scale. I mean, data centers, particularly the AI data centers, use significant water as well as significant electricity.
Yeah, both. So for now, all of Commissioner Aparna's will just leave open until she can attend a meeting, and, okay, that's fine. Then we have a couple from Commissioner Goodyear. Jenny, I don't know if you can speak to these or if you need a little bit of time.
No, I can, yeah, we can speak to them. So for the first question, how are the penalties calculated? And so I will, you know, this is a new provision that we're adding to this code language, but, you know, basically, the goal is for us not to impose any penalties, but really to work with the developer to mitigate a situation where they may be imposed. If that is just not feasible, then our process would be to work with legal and the developer to determine the appropriate penalty. So what we have outlined in the code is basically all the details we have, and then the rest would be worked through with legal and the developer. Does that help answer your question, Commissioner Woodyear?
So is that okay to close on that one? We'll make sure to get it actually in her answer into the matrix, too.
Perfect. Perfect. And then the last question was just around building performance and then the required period of time to reach that 75% occupancy. What we, we note is that, so they're required to reach 75% occupancy for the performance period. And we basically note that they should, that that needs to happen within the two years of issuance of the certificate of occupancy. But we do have a provision in there that they can request in writing for that to be extended. So for instance, if they aren't at 75% occupancy, they can ask to extend that performance period so that they can have, or basically give a complete picture with their data. That's going to be market-driven, right? If they're just not getting to full occupancy, that's not something that's necessarily within their control. So again, we do have a provision to help work through that, but we outlined it would be two years within their, from when their certificate of occupancy was issued.
Great. And then there's a couple of questions that were not necessarily green building-related. You had a question on the incentives that they're earning right now within the overlake piece or generally under the green building? That was the clarification I wanted.
Under the green building.
Under the green building, okay. Jenny, in the green building program, you're not necessarily giving the incentives there within each section, is that correct?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Can I even try to...
What are they earning?
Yeah, what they're earning is, so basically, what the, the intent with the green building program is that the incentives are going to be land use incentives that are defined within that specific zoning code or district. So we don't specify any specific incentives directly in the 2167 code language. So for instance, overlake identifies what the appropriate incentives are there. That's going to be different than the incentives offered in other areas of the city.
So right now, we're focusing really on FAR, on building height. The developers did request that we look at other types of incentives. In the scope of REBON 2050 and the availability of our research and development time, we have limited it to just the square footage of the building and building height. However, there is potential for us to expand that in the future. It's one of the reasons, our incentive program is a living document, too. So as we have the time to research and develop new tools and we choose to utilize them, we can plug them into the incentive program. But for right now, it's just the building square footage, the FAR, and the building height.
So the more points, the more FAR.
Yeah, and what we've done in the code is also set those thresholds, right? So actually, let me switch documents really quick, and I'll show you that.
Do you need me to turn your mic on when you speak?
You can hear without the microphones?
I can't hear without the microphone.
So you can see here in the, within the TOD focus area, we do have a couple of thresholds as well, right? So in addition to the FAR and the building height that you can earn just with your points, if you get over 100 points, you can start to combine the transfer of development rights program with this incentive program, which is building height and FAR related as well. And then if you're over 200 points, we just lift the FAR entirely and it goes away. And so we do keep the, the height limit because we have an, our EIS cap, and so we don't want to go beyond our environmental review at this time. That is something we could consider later a date as well with additional SEPA, which is something similar to what we're doing in Marymore. But like I said, for the scope of just getting something adopted and getting something new, we kept it as simple as we could. And then as we start to look at potentially other tools that might be helpful, we'll do additional research and development of those concepts. So the support for the more complicated incentives would, is going to just take more time to work through the details on. So. There were several other ideas that were proposed by the developers. So we can work through a number of different ideas, but for right now, it's just easier to go.
Did you have something, Commissioner West?
So I had a little bit of a different question. I was looking for this. I didn't find it. It might be in here. Do we have any regulations about how far down buildings can go or what uses are available underground level?
I will have to ask her building code official about that.
I couldn't find anything in this document, so I don't know if it's somewhere else.
We're not as concerned with underground development in overlake. Most of overlake doesn't have a water table issue. Where we are concerned about underground is in our critical aquifer areas, right? So downtown in Marymore, we do have limitations on how far down you can go, that the temporary construction de-watering changes are going to impact. In overlake, it's just a completely different situation. So we haven't adopted any restrictions within the overlake code.
So does that mean that their developers are...
Oops, mic.
It's on.
Oh, it's on, sorry. Oh, I just...
I wanted to make sure your mic was on.
Does that mean that developers have complete flexibility?
They can propose underground parking and go down or other underground structures, yeah. So we're not limiting that. If they want to do underground construction of part of their building, then that's okay.
I was kind of wondering, like, are there any reasons not, or to limit that? Or is it just, it's truly not a concern, as long as it fits other zoning and like fire code and earthquake standards? We're basically fine, right?
I don't know of any at this time. I think we do know that the soils do vary in overlake. So some areas are, the water infiltration is better than others, and so that might lead to some decisions on where you would want to underground because you wouldn't necessarily want to mess up your infiltration areas the best. But if it's a non-infiltrating area or has a hard time getting, that might be a great place for an underground parking garage. So I do know that there, the different soils may impact some of those decision-making processes, but again, without the water. But I can talk to our building code folks or...
Yeah, I mean, I imagine, I guess, the question that, that rises to my mind is, are we intentionally leaving it out or should we reference it?
We are intentionally leaving it out. We're not regulating underground parking garage to how far you can go down.
And it just doesn't affect the far? Like, that's, it's a separate issue. So like, if you...
That's a good question. If it's an underground parking, Jeff, would we count it towards
Hi, good evening. We don't count parking toward FAR, whether it's underground or above ground. Also, building underground is very expensive. That's really the limiting factor. I, I, I wouldn't really worry too much about what happens underground from a zoning perspective because it's just so expensive.
And then the Commissioner Woodier's last question was, how do we define small and local businesses? The zoning code rewrite team has proposed a couple of definitions. I've put them in the issues matrix. I'll make sure you get a copy of those. The last time we reviewed these definitions, there was some indication from Kim that she might revise these based on some issues that came up in the commenting. So I don't know if I have the latest version of her definitions, but this was in the document folder we're working in. I pulled these from.
Yeah, I mean, the reason why I asked that question, because I've seen in other documents, can you, can you guys hear me?
Get closer to the mic or...
The reason why I asked that question is because in other, in other documents, I see small businesses defined as mom and pop, but the SBA definition is very different. So I really want to get crystal clear on how we're defining.
Yeah.
Inconsistent throughout our documentation.
And that's the reason why Kim Dietz and Philly Marsh and I and a couple of others are working through the definitions. And we're going to make sure we have a definition adopted, because even when we were talking about town centers and Marymore's incentives for local businesses and whatnot, there's some conversations that we were realizing everybody did have a slightly different definition of what that meant.
And bigger implications, too, in terms of how you're defining it, because there's a, there's a awful difference between mom and pop and like the SBA.
Yeah, and what she's done here is she's provided a definition for small business, and then she does reference the SBA, small business definition of under 500 employees. But small business for purposes of ARPA grants is under 25. And then she's got a square footage and stuff in here, too, so...
And there's a home-based small business.
This doesn't qualify as, I mean, we're not looking at like a home occupation style of small business, which is one or two employees. This is, small business is actually larger than that. So it would include that, obviously, but it, it's not limited to that.
I just think there's, there's inconsistency. That's why I was, I was curious about the definition.
Yeah, and like I said, I put it in the issues matrix. I'll make sure you guys get a copy of the updated issues matrix. And then I will confirm with Kim if there has been any edits to this at all since we last looked at it. I know there was, she had a series of four definitions in that sequence, and I know at least two of them had to be edited at some point. So I'll, I'll follow up on that. I'll make sure that your question and our conversations about underground is reflected in the next version of the issues matrix. Is there anything else that we would like to see related to either the green building program and the incentives or the overlake incentive program?
Anybody have anything, any questions about the transition?
So the question I have then is, we'll go ahead and leave the issues matrix open because Aparna has her questions in, but I can, will go ahead and prepare a draft planning commission recommendation for you guys to consider at this point. Okay, right. Thank you. And that is all for this item.
Janine, you need to get closer to the mic when you talk. They're having trouble hearing you online. Yeah, or use the other mic, so.
Use both.
Can I use two mics?
Turn them both off.
Unfortunately, these mics, they need like a three-inch away in order to really pick up.
They really need to be like within a fist.
So we're ready to move on to the next item?
Yes, we are ready to move on to the next item, which is REBON 2050 final EIS reaping.
All right, so, exciting news. We've published our final EIS. Yay! Three years later, we've concluded our, that work. So we published it last Friday afternoon. It is available on our website. It is a smaller document than last time. We're about 203 pages instead of over 600. So hopefully, that makes it easier for folks to read through. We began our environmental review process in 2020 with our scoping document, which was asking the community what you want to include in the environmental review process. And we went through our draft EIS, our supplemental draft EIS, and the final document is our final EIS. It includes responses to comments on our supplemental draft. It finalizes the preferred alternative, which there's no substantial change, but there were some additional information about corrections and things, additional research and changes we've done from a policy and code perspective since that time we published the supplemental that we just recorded and documented in that document. And it updates some information about the planned action and infill exemptions. So it does not repeat a lot of information, so that we didn't have an even longer document. So there are some references to the draft EIS and the supplemental draft for additional information. As we, again, didn't make any substantial changes. The preferred growth alternative and the distribution of growth has not changed. We did have some ongoing requests to reconsider downtown. The decision made by our mayor and council was to not make any changes. Just a reminder, the distribution pattern of growth and in 2050 maps are available in the PowerPoint. We do have the online story map for everybody. We will be updating that to include the references to the FEIS and information about the planned action and the infill exemptions. So I highly recommend the story map for folks who want to actually dive into what we did in the environmental review. The FEIS included updated versions of the proposed land use map and the proposed zoning map. As you can see, they are significantly cleaner maps than our current ones. We were able to consolidate both the land use categories and the zoning categories. So it'll streamline quite a few things. Okay. We are working on some additional materials, and starting in the first quarter of next year, you'll see a lot of materials and a lot of community conversations about exactly what this has mean to my property. And we're developing some resources so that people can dive into what are the new zoning districts going to look like. And then we'll be preparing conversations with the planning commission and the community about those draft districts. So we are currently in the process of drafting them right now. Okay. What is new in the FEIS? As I mentioned, there's some, just finalization of the preferred alternative in the comments. There's also some new information in our what is changing, especially in the infill exemption. We added some references because as we found in the supplemental draft EIS, the downtown sewer issues and there were some things that need to be amended in code in order to accommodate some of those things. And so we added some information on that in that document. Also, our public works folks who do our stormwater and our permitting for our MPDS stormwater permit have indicated that as we are going in Overlake Village from 80% lock coverage to 100% lock coverage, we need to make some amendments to the code to make sure that we're in compliance with all the permitting requirements. And so we've added some references to the stormwater technical notebook updates that are going to be happening and some Redmond Unimistil code updates that are going to be happening, just to make sure that as we do that transition to go more urban, we're in compliance with our permitting. And the state issued some guidance in November on infill exemptions, how to process them, when they would not apply. And so we updated the infill exemption appendix to reference that information that came out from the state in Feb, Jan, excuse me, November. So we did incorporate that as well. And just a reminder, most housing projects in the future will be covered under some type of SEPA planned action or infill exemption. We are seeking staff input right now and drafting those documents, and you will see them in February. So we plan to bring you the draft of the planned action and infill exemptions in February. And that is all I have. It was just a briefing today. There is no comment at this point from changes because we're now officially done. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
No questions, just yay. Long process.
All right, so now we're transitioning to the implementation phase. So, looking forward to bringing you the infill exemption information. In particular, we've started to create some guidance documents that shows the difference between the different infill exemptions, because there will be something different for downtown and Marymore and then the citywide. They all cover different things because they're under different SEPA provisions. And so we want to make sure everybody's clear about the distinction and what's covered. So the educational materials for that, I think, are going to be really important. But it is going to be really exciting that most housing projects moving forward will not have to do an individual project level SEPA. So.
Great.
Okay, all right, that's it for me this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we move on to REBON 2050, land use settlement, draft two study session. Come on over, Ian and Lauren.
All right, so, continuing with our conversation last week on land use draft two, we will review the issues matrix and some of the questions and comments that came up last, last week. So, one of the questions we received was, why are the numbers so specific in the land use category, and especially in that FE, the framework policy LU1? And they're consistent with the growth targets that were contained in the King County by planning policies, what's contained in the FEIS. And there is, you know, potential that they will need to be adjusted, but based on precedent, our numbers have been very accurate on our projections. So, we're, or, there can be adjustments made, but it's not necessarily, we won't necessarily need to. Do you have anyone, any follow-up questions for that?
Yeah, I think, I think an overall theme is jurisdictions do not plan in isolation, so there's a lot of collaboration between what targets, estimated need goes on throughout the region. We'll also note that this is Commissioner Aparna's, and if we want to continue the theme of what we did at earlier presentations, we can just keep this one open.
Commissioner Weston.
So, I had one follow-up question on this. In the past, has King County, like, issued consequences, or have there been problems if cities haven't met their goals? Or is this like a new chapter, and we're all expecting like a change in the way things go, starting now?
Jurisdictions have always had an expectation of fulfilling their goals. The, the amount of consequences in practice has been relatively minimal, but it could impact things like grants or compliance issues, but it's, it's more of an internal carrot than an external stick, if that makes sense.
And it's, it's actually the state that would, you know, assess any consequences.
It was a issue a year or two ago where the growth management board was getting, sending complaints to Inslee about some amish, so. Commissioner Nueva Camina.
So, with what we're seeing very recently in Woodinville, where they're not going to be moving forward with their garden district, if that were to happen in Redmond, so then therefore would Redmond have a consequence for not meeting a goal if that said district was part of the?
I think overall, there's an understanding of external consequences, or external circumstances. We're hopeful that because this is a long-range plan, we'd be able to work through some of those lulls to get there. And there is a larger capacity in our preferred alternative than there is for our goals, because we are assuming that some development won't happen. So, we're trying to make sure that we balance that enough that even with some of those lulls, we'll still get there.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
We've certainly gone through lulls before, and once the economy approves, building picks back up. But yeah, I, I think we'll keep this open and let Aparna weigh in.
So, there is a question about defining sustainable development, and there will be a glossary of terms. I think there's also, something to note is to be balancing both our definitions and our, how explicit we are, because we don't want to be too specific and then have to then do a comprehensive plan amendment on the, versus just a zoning code amendment. And we cover that in some of these other issue matrices, too. So, it's, it's sort of striking that balance of being really explicit and vague. But we can leave that, should we leave that open, or do you want us to close that for now?
I'll leave it open for Aparna.
The next topic was adding utilities like telecommunications, internet and cellphone, specifically in LU12. And LU12 provides the basis for those other chapters, like the utilities element. So, we're keeping that language broad, and then having those explicitly more defined in that chapter.
We'll make sure Glenn takes care of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's the right choice.
Because I, I think at one point, I even questioned, like, why do we have this in here? It's the land use chapter, and like Glenn's like, no, we need that in there for the utilities chapter, so.
Yep.
Let's see, what's next? Oh, manufacturing and park and daycares. Okay, so there was concerns about daycares being compatible uses with manufacturing, and we did hear a lot from the community about the inadequate supply of daycare, and it needs to be close to jobs and centers of employment. So, it is, you know, we're considering it sort of a, like a supplemental use for those districts to be able, to at least allow that need to be met.
Go ahead.
So, I am very torn on that. Like, I can see the premise there. It seems, like, it seems like a good idea until you get into, like, actually what environment is okay for daycares. Daycares are incredibly cost-challenged businesses. Like, a lot of times, they can't locate in this area because it's just so expensive. So, I would hate to set up a situation where it's, you have kids in an environment that doesn't actually seem healthy because it's so expensive, and that's the only land that's available. So, that, that one is really hard to me. And especially, like, noise is a big issue, like pollution might be a big issue, but I'm more, I'm mostly worried about, like, the noise and the traffic, and, I don't know. It's, when my children are in daycare, like, most of the daycares are actually lining along, there's a whole stretch of them lining along 520 in Kirkland. They're very loud. The playgrounds are, like, the kids can't hear the teachers, they're that loud sometimes. And it's, like, that's not an ideal situation. So, I just, that one, I'm really torn on. I can see the thought behind it, but I don't necessarily think it's the best thing for kids to be in an industrial or manufacturing environment.
Commissioner Nueva Camina.
Back when my youngest was in childcare, I was working at a biomed company up in, biomed row up in Bothell. And technically, I believe that it is considered a manufacturing district. And I was so grateful to have childcare inside of there, and it was quieter than anything that we're seeing in Kirkland. And it was wonderful to have it close to, to the job, and that it, depending on, on the type of manufacturing, it doesn't have to be, you know, when we think about manufacturing, and it's like loud and noise and pollution and all the things of, you know, bad manufacturing, and that it, it doesn't have to be that way. There can, there's some really great things about it.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was thinking of, not, not excluding the idea of onsite daycare at a company. Go ahead.
And I do know a lot of four-year-olds who would be really excited being anywhere close to big trucks, so there's...
Absolutely.
But I just, I think this is one of those, like, sticky ones. I think it's, I'd love to see more community input on this.
There are pros and cons.
There really are, it's a hard one.
I guess I just want to comment on sort of the equitable lens as well. You've got so many individuals who are working in those fields, and there's industry, there's industry, light versus heavy. And I'm very much in favor of allowing for daycare, but perhaps with some parameters in terms of the physical environment in which they're located, so that the children are protected. But I think it's really essential that there's a proximity to those uses and to daycare in order to continue to sustain those, those facilities or those businesses.
That's, that's sort of all along the lines of what I was thinking, listening to this conversation. Maybe there's some sort of use-specific standards that wouldn't necessarily fall in the comprehensive plan, but that would be addressed on the zoning side.
The zoning code. I would have continued to work longer if there'd been onsite daycare at the place I worked. Go ahead.
Are there, are there limitations on daycares in other adjacent areas?
I'd have to take a look.
Like, is there a problem with having it in mixed use, or is there a problem with having it?
I don't think it's precluded, but I'd have to, I just, I'd want to check, yeah.
Yeah. I'm just curious.
So, for action items, it seems like we are in favor of keeping that in MP, and then later on in the implementing zone, we look at uses, and then a research question is, what are the restrictions currently for daycares? Yeah? All right?
Yeah, that sounds right.
Yeah, something to note, it is currently allowed in the manufacturing park zone, too. So, it would be a change if we were to, to remove that.
And I definitely, I just think it's a hard one. Like, I really think people need access to quality childcare near their jobs. That's definitely a need. It's just that we also know some manufacturing just generates things that are unhealthy for kids. So, it's, I, that's really hard.
And there's some restrictions right now. Play equipment shall be located no less than 10 feet from any property line, so. But we can certainly review as we update regulations on anything, any other restrictions that we'd want to place. Let's see, what's next?
Do we want to close issue four?
That's again, Commissioner Aparna.
Oh, keep it open.
We'll keep it open for her.
The next one was just a question on the wording of a specific policy that was consolidated, so it's sort of still read like two separate policies, so we've updated the language on that. But it's a comment from Aparna, so we can keep that open as well. Issue six, glare considerations. So, yeah, we can take that into, into account for the next draft. But we can leave that open as well. Oh, and then this was a question, too, on the land use designation and zoning district, specifically updating, where we made the change to add neighborhood mixed use into the neighborhood land use designation versus the mixed use designation. And that was mostly allowed to just flexibility and the ability to be a little more agile in rezoning, so that they don't have to go through a comp plan amendment, or an applicant doesn't have to go through a comp plan amendment versus a, just a zoning amendment. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay. Oh, this is addressing specifically the comments we received from the school district, facilitating adequate, adequate infrastructure and community facilities to support new homes and jobs, and then ensuring that public infrastructure and community services, yeah, to just address the, the comments that we received from the, from the school board, from the school district. And that's the, the next, the next issue is the same as well, to address those school district comments. Did you want to add anything?
I just want to double-check. Do we want to close these? Because our intent is, for most of these, the feedback is very actionable, so we can just sure get that in the next draft.
Yeah.
You got it, we'll close it.
It'll go in the next draft, so.
I'm looking, I'm scrolling through. What's the next one? Oh, it's, clarity is needed on how community facilities relate to zoning districts and land use designations. Do you want to take this one?
Yeah, this question, or this discussion item, really gets at one of the pieces we're hoping to get from a polished land use settlement, is that right now, we have essential public facilities, and that's defined in the RCW, and it's kind of more heavy essential facilities. The community facilities are locally semi-defined in the current draft for things like human services, schools, and so forth. And we think there's opportunity to kind of get that language more tightened up and more explicit in what is included in community facilities. Whether we want to do that in the glossary, put it directly in one of the land use designations. We also have a comment here about schools and making sure they're not, you know, barred from a lot of these places. And education kind of pops up, but there's not really a clear through line. So, staff recommendation is, we're going to take this feedback and just really make sure that the intent is clear, and that schools are in fact allowed.
So, that sounds great. The only other comment that I would say is, it wasn't necessarily just schools. So, like, if there was, like, a community building that we wanted to be able to add in one of the other neighborhoods of some sort or other that's serving, like, one of these, like, community facilities purposes, or her, human services purpose, like, I wouldn't want it to be barred from being there because of the land use map. And I don't have a great example of that, but like, we've talked about adding more services to parks as an example of something. I would love that to be, like, explicitly included, if possible, like, if the land is there and it's the city's land that they're able to do things to benefit Redmond, like, residents. But that part wasn't jumping out at me as obvious when I read it, and like, I don't know, fire stations, I don't, I don't have great examples, like, what that would be, but it just, if it, it wasn't just about the schools, it's sort of, like, as the population grows, is Redmond able to meet needs?
So, it's not so much like putting community facilities in any specific land use designation, but more like creating a, a general policy that just ensures that those outcomes could occur across most land use designations?
I think so. And that's very open to, I think, debate, but it's, to me, like, I wouldn't want something to be precluded from, for example, being in Grasslon, my neighborhood, just because it's like a Grasslon-style neighborhood. Like, you know, like, we don't need to limit things to only being downtown, and only being in Overlake, and only being...
A library annex, or...
Yeah, it, it just, it seems like there's, like, there's a lot of fixed infrastructure right now, but there might need to be more, and I don't, when we're looking at this map, it wasn't clear to me from that particular section that those uses are obviously included.
As we move things towards more mixed use across the city, make sure there are not excluding these community facilities as part of that, and make it a little more explicit in the, in the policy, is what I'm hearing. Yeah, okay.
Yes, please, that would be great. And I don't know, it might make sense to close this, or if it's going to get rolled in, or else leave it open if, like, if you want the jog.
I think we'll, yeah, we'll just integrate it into the next, and then flag it for review at the next draft review.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
Yeah. What's next? able to add in one of the other neighborhoods of some sort or other that's serving, like, one of these, like, community facilities purposes, or her, human services purpose, like, I wouldn't want it to be barred from being there because of the land use map. And I don't have a great example of that, but like, we've talked about adding more services to parks as an example of something. I would love that to be, like, explicitly included, if possible. Like, if the land is there and it's the city's land that they're able to do things to benefit Redmond, like, residents. But that part wasn't jumping out at me as obvious when I read it. And like, I don't know, fire stations. I don't, I don't have great examples, like, what that would be. But it just, if it, it wasn't just about the schools. It's sort of, like, as the population grows, is Redmond able to meet needs?
So it's not so much like putting community facilities in any specific land use designation, but more like creating a, a general policy that just ensures that those outcomes could occur across most land use designations?
I think so. And that's very open to, I think, debate. But it's, to me, like, I wouldn't want something to be precluded from, for example, being in Grassland, my neighborhood, just because it's like a Grassland-style neighborhood. Like, you know, like, we don't need to limit things to only being downtown and only being in Overlake and only being...
A library annex, or...
Yeah. It just, it seems like there's, like, there's a lot of fixed infrastructure right now, but there might need to be more. And I don't, when we're looking at this map, it wasn't clear to me from that particular section that those uses are obviously included.
As we move things towards more mixed use across the city, make sure there are not excluding these community facilities as part of that, and make it a little more explicit in the, in the policy, is what I'm hearing. Yeah, okay.
Yes, please. That would be great. And I don't know, it might make sense to close this, or if it's going to get rolled in, or else leave it open if, like, if you want the jog.
I think we'll, yeah, we'll just integrate it into the next and then flag it for review at the next draft review.
Okay. That sounds great. Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, it's the chart, the, the Redmond land area by land use designation. Just, I think it's part of the existing conditions, so it was pulled over from the existing conditions report. But we can kind of just clarify that in the next draft and just add a little more narrative to have it make more sense in reading through the, the element.
Yeah, that's perfect. And then this can close.
And yeah, all the, we will be adding the light rail line and stations to some future maps.
Yes, please. And that can close?
It should be part of the default map.
Oh, I know. It really should.
The default Redmond map that comes up should have the light rail station.
And then the next one, added clarity on how TOD fits within the land use designations. And we can add some narrative with more, more on TOD, because kind of how it's the overarching goal, and then also how it's part of, going to be part of, kind of the regulatory zoning in the centers. But we can leave that open, because that's, that's from Aparna.
It's Commissioner Aparna. Go ahead.
And I actually did think that was covered already. That was, that fits really well with my comment on adding the light rail to maps, because I thought just having that line with the four stations, like, really drives home that point. But I thought it was already pretty well-covered otherwise, and that's actually my personal opinion.
Are there additional questions, issues, thoughts that people want to add to this issues matrix? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll move on to Redmond 2050 housing regulations study session. Ian.
Hello. My name is Ian Lefkort. I use he/him pronouns. I'm a senior planner with long-range planning, and I am excited to continue the discussion on the affordable housing updates related to Overlake specifically, and the other associated regulation amendments generally going forward with the housing element. We've conducted further analysis that we're excited to share with you, and I'm going to be joined by Mike Stanger from Arch. We've got a presentation, we've got our issues matrix, and then we'll also just have an FAQ. This meeting, the 1220, has a new set of regulatory amendment redlines that tried to incorporate the feedback we heard from our commission over the last month and a half. This is a set of amendments that is scheduled for a public hearing, which was duly noticed for January 10. So we expect to hear more stakeholder feedback between now and then, and we're excited to share what we've got. Perfect. Okay. So we've got our overall housing amendments. We'll talk about the scope, the schedule, and then we'll dive more into that 2120 affordable housing considerations. The changes between what initially went forward at the November 15 meeting and now, the Fianlu has had additional content added to add more specificity and criteria. The inclusionary zoning has changed quite a bit. Now it's just going to be on Overlake. It's just going to be two sets of options for rental and ownership. And we have pioneer provisions in this draft. Now, all of this is included under the public hearing, so we can amend as the commission deems appropriate. And then finally, the small lot short plats and the attached dwelling units pieces that were in the initial 1115 components have been excluded. They'll be addressed later with the residential zoning regulations, neighborhood zoning regulations, pardon me. Here's the proposed schedule, public hearing to start the new year, can't think of a better way. And then we'll move forward through the rest of January and maybe the start of February. That's our expected timeline for this project. For the affordable housing itself, we're touching again on why there's so much need. These are King County, county-wide planning policy targets. We've shared that before. Most of the need is below 50% AMI. And we feel like this is a great slide demonstrating some of the equity considerations. The overall takeaway from these two graphs is that folks at the lower income bands experience a higher proportionate share of cost burden, and extreme cost burden, than folks at the higher AMIs. So it's not just a matter of providing the housing unit itself, which becomes affordable, but also what that implies to housing security. And one of the key drivers of individuals suffering from homelessness is that they simply can't afford the housing. Like, like, that is the driving factor. So we, we hope this demonstrates some of the, the equity considerations for targeting or focusing our policies at 50% AMI. And one of the policy goals we really want to emphasize is that we all want housing to be built. There, there's no situation where we're trying to delay housing. We're excited that this analysis shows that the yield on cost from the proposed options in front of the planning commission have a similar yield on cost to the projects today. So that means if we didn't change anything and the economic conditions improved to a point where projects today could be built feasibly, the projects under the upzone and associated affordable housing changes in Overlake would become feasible at exactly the same time. There would be no delay in construction. And I will pass this over to Mike to walk us through the next pieces.
Thank you, Mike Stanger, Senior Planner at Arch. So I wanted to share this data with you, a selection of, of affordable housing produced over the last 13 years, 14 years, and to show what an impact that Redmond's current programs have had to produce almost as many as all of our other Arch member cities combined. I'd also particularly point out that Redmond only adopted the multifamily tax exemption in 2017. And the special feature of that is those 258 units that are already in place will be affordable for life of those projects compared to some of the 323 in the other Arch cities, or if you even compared it to Seattle, those, the affordability on those units expire after 12 years typically. And Redmond's do not. So Redmond, you know, in my view is, had the most successful combination of inclusionary zoning and tax exemption programs anywhere in Washington. And the pipeline is just as healthy in Redmond as anywhere in East King County. I also wanted to share this timeline of projects that were built in Redmond since inclusionary zoning was adopted. Reiterating a story from a couple of meetings ago that I shared with you about how, when the city initially adopted mandatory affordability, they did so knowing that they needed to be patient until the market picked up, came to Redmond and downtown was ready to develop. And that's pretty much how things worked out, is things picked up. Of course, you know, there was a great recession around 2008, 2009, so that's why you see a dip there. But the city nevertheless was expanding mandatory affordability to other neighborhoods, and that did not seem to slow down development in those neighborhoods. So I guess the, the point there was that the city has, you know, maintained a steady course and has seen a lot of production from it. So getting onto the analysis that we did for this zoning, rezoning in, of, Overlake is very similar to the analysis that Arch did back in the day when mandatory affordability was first adopted. And that is to do what we call an incentives or a benefit analysis, which is based on, on economics concept sometimes called land value capture. The idea is to try to estimate the value that's, that the city is creating for landowners through a change in regulations, usually by increasing the development capacity of the land, but sometimes also by reducing development costs, such as reducing parking minimums or tax exemptions or other things. And then we compare that to the affordability that the public could enjoy in the form of the gap between market rents and affordable rents. And what we aim for is to make sure that the value going to the landowner or developer exceeds the value that would come back in affordable housing. The next couple of slides, I'll go through that in a little bit more detail, the components of that. So one is the increased development capacity. And the way we monetize or quantify this is by thinking about the new market rate units that a developer could build compared to what they can currently build. And it's as if for each new market rate unit, they're getting the value of the land per unit that they have paid for it. So typically, until this, in the last year or so, when things have gone south in the market, land was selling, multifamily land was selling for about $65,000 a unit. If you add the capacity to what they can build, then it's as if you're giving them free land at $65,000 for each unit. So that's how we think about that. There are other ways to think about it. You can think about profit from the new market rate units or other means, but we have found that in a land capture, land value capture approach, that using the land value is a more reliable way to measure that. Next, we, I mentioned the cost savings to the development cost of a project by not requiring as much parking. Now, we're not, we haven't actually used that value in the analysis that I'm going to show you, but, but that is a, a consideration. Some cities have counted that value. It's not just, just the construction cost savings, but it's also potentially, you could build more units in the space that would have gone to housing. But again, we're not using that here, but I just want to note that that's conceptually possible. And then the third part on the value to, to the developer would be the multifamily tax exemption. And this we can calculate by the, the value that, that is typically taxed for our multifamily units. And as you probably know, all of the multifamily units, not just the affordable units, but the, all of the residential improvements are tax exempt for either eight or 12 years. And we make, turn that into a present value for this analysis through a discount factor. And then on the public side, or, or the affordable housing side, we value the affordable housing, as I said, by taking the, the gap between market rate rents and affordable rents. And we, again, will bring, because the, the units will stay affordable for life of the project, we create a, a present value estimate of that by using a capitalization rate, which is similar to a discount rate. So we, we add all those together. We're, in the benefits analysis, we're not concerned with construction costs or lending costs or any other factors in the, any other income sources, because we're really focused on what is the impact of the regulations that are being proposed or considered. And what we found, well, we, we ran a number of scenarios with different building prototypes. And again, we compared the, the value to the landowner, to value to, to the public, and we wanted to calibrate them to make sure that what we would propose for affordable housing would be less than the value created. So what I'm showing here is that if we, what's proposed is to double the residential FAR from 2.5 to 5.0. And the current baseline, that is, the current regulations would require 10% at 80% of median income without a tax exemption. But we're comparing that to the double the capacity with an eight-year tax exemption. And we found that the value to the developer is one and a half times the value of increasing the affordable housing to 12 and a half percent at 50 AMI. It's one and a half times the value of increasing the affordable housing to 15% at 50 AMI. Now, 1.1 times is a little bit low by our standards. That is, we want, if it, if the ratio is one to one, then we would say that every dollar that the city's creating through the regulations is coming back in affordable housing, so the developer's not really getting any, any of that benefit. So we want it to be higher than one. And really, we'd like it to be at least 1.2 or more, so we feel comfortable that there's some buffer in case, you know, because we're estimating, we don't know, we're, you know, we're predicting the future, and the different projects will have different factors, different results. So we want to build in some buffer to be confident that this would work across the board. And that's why we like a ratio of 1.5 better than 1.1. So we didn't feel comfortable recommending 15% at 50 AMI, but we found that 15% at 60 AMI turned out to be pretty much the same value exchange as 12 and a half at 50. So those could be paired together, if you wanted to, to think of it that way. Now, we also did a complete, I mentioned that the benefits analysis doesn't really consider other costs or income sources or things like that, as a developer typically would. So, so we also have a tool to be able to do that, that Bay Area Economics has helped us develop over the last year. It's been vetted over months of, of stakeholder meetings with general support, or at least lack of objection to it. We satisfied most of the concerns that have been raised for us, we think. So we feel pretty comfortable with this model as well. And that gives us results in the form of a yield on cost, which is the, the ratio between the net operating income in the first stabilized year of a project and the total development cost. I think you had a speaker earlier saying, referring to costs of current projects being around four, where they need to get something higher than six, or six to seven percent. So the results that we're getting in, using our model are similar. The existing zoning prototypes and scenarios that we ran indicate that a yield on costs of 4.1%, not feasible. The scenarios that we ran with the proposed zoning increased those yields... The scenarios that we ran with the proposed zoning increased those yields on cost. In these scenarios, for the 12 and a half percent at 50 AMI and 15 at 60 AMI, those both increased the yield on cost to 4.5. Still not feasible, probably, but an improvement. And that's what we're aiming for, is that what we're, is that what we propose for new regulations would help and not hurt a project going forward. I think we can go. So we did some other scenarios too. We, we did a similar one for the OV zones under a homeownership condominium or multifamily prototype and found similar results in terms of the benefit ratios. Again, the 12 and a half percent at, at 80 AMI and 15% at 100 AMI are kind of analogous in the results to the 12 and a half percent and 15% for the rental. Unfortunately, we're not able to reduce the AMI level for a homeownership. And that's chiefly because the price difference between for, a market for sale project and affordable is much greater. And in case you were wondering, we couldn't do a yield on cost for the homeownership model because we don't have that, that model developed for homeownership, but we plan to do that in the coming year. And then finally, we were asked to look at the, the OBAT and the OVMF zones, which are, the proposal's a little bit different. And roughly speaking, the, the development capacity would triple rather than double. So the incentive ratios are a little bit better here, and so are the yield on cost. So in any case, we think that the, the same affordability requirements would work well in these zones as they would in the OV zones.
And that takes us to really, the conclusion that comes from that great analysis is, staff recommendation is that 12.5% set aside, 50% AMI for rentals, 80% AMI for ownership. That gives us the cost benefit, or the benefits ratio that we believe are in the appropriate area. It also gives a yield on cost that is estimated to be higher than the status quo, so that helps development. The amendment package does have options. We wanted to include those for the commission, but we feel that these are the, the most compelling recommendations. And so we can stop there before we go into the issues matrix, if there's any questions.
Commissioner Wilson.
So I, a question about the chart, just about the estimated housing need. It was near the beginning. It's a yellow on a black background, that one. What have, is it, are we just saying at this point, it's not feasible to meet most of that below 30% and below 50%?
With inclusionary zoning, if we're looking just at that tool, that will not satisfy the demand.
So remind me, for my history here, Redmond was one of the first cities to do inclusionary And we've been the most successful at it. And this is a, a regional problem. So we, we took a leap of faith back in 1993 and, and the only way this problem is going to be addressed at lower AMIs is to take another leap of faith. I mean, the market is not going to just start building houses, housing for income levels. I have a daughter who lives here, who is a college graduate, who's a full-time employee, and she does not make 80% of the AMI. She lives here because mom provides a stipend to, so she can live here. But the only way I can see that this is going to happen is if a city says, we're going to take that leap of faith. And developers can say, well, we won't build here. Well, we'll see. They built in Redmond despite Redmond taking that leap of faith back in 1993. They built more affordable housing here than anywhere else. We need places for everybody who works in Redmond to live in Redmond. Go ahead.
I had a similar reaction. One of the public comments was speaking about affordable housing and mid-range AMI as desperately needing services in order to stay in their homes. And I found that really offensive. These are people working at jobs that were called essential workers two years ago. They are very, very important parts of our community. They're very functional adults. They deserve to have housing they can afford. They deserve not to commute endlessly to reach jobs here in Redmond. I really appreciate this framing in this presentation because I think that it gives us permission to make a morally smart decision. And I'm just, I'm really appreciative for that. I can tell that Redmond is not trying to do something flighty or something irresponsible or something unrealistic. We're saying there's a real need and it's important to us that we provide housing for people who deserve to live in Redmond if they want to live in Redmond. And it's, it's going to be a slow process. The market is not super right now. But I just, I really appreciate the direction that this is moving. I think it's the right thing for Redmond long-term. I think it's the right thing for Redmond short-term. I just, it's, it's a pleasure to live in a city that is thinking about housing this
I have a question, Sheri. So first, I would just comment that I, I don't think anybody should question the I think what people question is the, the, the solution, right? That, that is, is the proposal going to work? Is, is this the right solution? Nobody says that we shouldn't be working as hard as we can to find solutions to provide housing for those people, for, for people with, with lower incomes. The question is, is this the right solution? And is it going to break something that's working? And that we live in a free market economy, and if you make the money go elsewhere, you're going to end up with, not only are you going to end up with no affordable housing, you're going to end up with no housing stock at all being built, because you've made it too difficult for people. We need to be making housing as, we need to be building it as fast as we can, not putting obstacles in front of developers who continue to tell us that, that this is going to really slow them down. So my, my question is to Mike and to Ian, when you have somebody come to you from Capstone, who is a, a valued partner with the city of Redmond and has a proven track record in doing exactly what you want them to do, when they come to you and tell you, this is not viable and we will not participate on a going-forward basis in projects in Redmond if this is what you do, and that there's more than just these numbers, as was pointed out, that it's not just the housing, there's an entire structural support system that needs to be put in place for people. What is your response to them? This, I mean, this is a valued partner. And, and so I wouldn't take it lightly and just say, oh, here's what my numbers say, because, because they're really, they, they, they have a track record of, of doing exactly what you want them to do, and they're coming to you and they're saying, this isn't going to work. What do you tell them?
Well, we don't tell them as much as we ask them. I would say, first of all, we, we want to understand what their, what their perspective is, what their numbers are showing them, why they're concerned, and how, how these things work from their standpoint. So we, we do meet with, I haven't met personally with Capstone, but I've met with a number of others. Brian Runberg, I think, spoke at your last meeting. We've had meetings with them, with, certainly with their other representatives. And we've looked at, you know, numbers that their, spreadsheets that they're willing to share with us and to try to find out where the, where it is that, or the pain point is that affordable housing is creating. And it just, I, I can just tell you that in, in those meetings over the last year, the, it becomes clear to me that the affordable housing, even wiping out the affordable housing entirely, would not make those projects pencil. And so it's really a much bigger problem than affordable housing and one that the city can't fix.
Well, I, I, I think there are perhaps other solutions that are not being put forward at this particular time. I, I don't know what the solution is, but as we heard from Capstone, that the types of, of environments that are being created that are successful, it's not, it's not where we just put them in housing and leave them, you know, that there, that there needs to be additional support.
I really strongly object to that characterization.
Well, it's not a characterization. It's what, it's what, it's what Capstone is telling us.
Capstone, he, he gave an anecdote of a person.
No, he gave numbers of, of.
That's what he said.
Of turnover.
He gave an anecdote of a person. I strongly object to the characterization of people at 50% AMI as needing support services.
That they're, that they're.
You're talking about people who work full-time jobs in the city. Right, you're talking about people, a, a family of four at 50% AMI is 68.5, okay? My daughter is below, below the 50%, which is 47.95, working at a nonprofit. There are lots of people in the city who are at the 50% AMI that do not need support services. They need a place to live.
I would agree, I, I would agree with that. Even at my son's school, he goes to Rockwell, we have a number of families, they're perfectly upstanding citizens, no criminal records, no substance abuse problems, no social problems, no mental problems, and yet they're not meeting that threshold. So I would agree with, with Sheri's comment that saying that people at that AMI are needing of support services, I would, I would, I find that offensive.
It's not a, it's, it's a data point that was provided to us by somebody who actually works in this area, that, that the turnover at the non-support level is twice that of the, the, the units that they have that provide support.
I have different data points.
It's data.
I'm not going to argue with, with that, with that comment. I'm just saying that I personally find it an offensive. Those are my values. That's my opinion. I have the evidence of that to support my opinions within the, the community that my son goes to school.
I, I do have a, a separate question, if I may ask that question. You mentioned that, that even if you were to take out the affordability issue, that for a lot of these developers, it wouldn't pencil out. And I'm just curious to understand, what are some of those issues that are causing the lack of penciling in?
Here you go, over and over, the same two things, construction costs and interest rates.
That's really, that's really the elephant in the room, then.
Right. I, I mentioned, somebody mentioned the MOBAC or Green District, and it's, it's right there in that story.
Yeah.
It's like construction costs and interest rates, and there's no affordable housing component to that project.
Nothing's, nothing's being built right now because interest rates are high. Until interest rates drop, things aren't going to move. Commissioner.
So then, sorry, so then do we have the flexibility to make adjustments as this, we're obviously in a very difficult environment. It's, it's catastrophic, I guess, if you would, if you will, for, for developers. Do we have the flexibility to make adjustments when the climate changes? There is a.
When the climate changes, building will happen. I mean, we've been through this before.
Yeah, so we're looking at six-month horizon then, when, when, when the interest rates go down.
I mean, this is, we do long-range planning.
No, I know.
I mean, we've seen, we've seen this happen before. And I wouldn't even call this, I mean, it's catastrophic if you're a developer and you don't have the cash flow to, to manage this. But when I bought my first house, the interest, I had a 9% mortgage. I mean, I've seen higher interest rates than this.
Those are here in 81, it was at 18%. So.
Right. Yeah. If you're old enough, you've seen it.
Sorry, I'm dating myself.
Commissioner Noeve Camina had something to.
And I think that that's, that's the thing that I, I circle back to and remind us, that we're looking at 30 years, we're looking at long range. What we're seeing right now is not going to continue on ad nauseam. It is going to go up, it is going to go down, and we know this. You know, we've got partners in Redmond that have been here for over 50 years. They have seen it come and they've seen it go. They've weathered the storm, and it's because we've been aligned on our values as a community as to why it's been sustainable. Just for the record, Sheri Nichols, I just want to state that I am in complete agreement with the statements that you had made earlier in response to what had previously been referred to as those people at 50% AMI. Going back to the, to the topic of sustainable local economies, during my day job, I get to, and I love what I do, I get to work on what is going to be sustainable planning financially for individuals and organizations. I'm not looking at what's happening right now. I'm not looking at what's happening in five years. I'm looking at what is happening 20 to 30 years from now. I understand that there are going to be a series of events, and I don't know when those series are going to kick off. Same thing here. There's going to be a series of events when it comes to the housing market. When is that series going to pop off? We have no idea. But what we can do, rather than what was referred to earlier as a lull, we know that these lulls are going to happen. I think that this is the distinction between resilient and sustainable. Resilient is going to measure the lull. So that's going to be, when do you take a hit and how long until you recover or get back up from it? Sustainability instead is, okay, well, we're going to take a hit here, but that's okay because we've got another bucket over here that we can tap into. So I think looking at that long-term, where can we then increase our sustainability as a community? And that always comes down to making sure that we are a complete community, including those at 50% AMI and below, because now we're talking about our workforce. And if we're going to continue to vilify those that commute or own a car or penalize them in some kind of way, well, if they have to live in another area outside of Redmond to come in, now we're making them, you know, the, the villain because they own a car and they have to drive. Well, they have to drive because they don't have housing here. So then how can we say that we're truly taking care of our people if we continue to be putting others' interests before our communities?
I want to add, there are a lot of people who work at Microsoft, they're orange badge workers, not blue badge workers, who are making 50% AMI or lower. workers, not blue badge workers, who are making 50% AMI or lower. They're making minimum wage.
Yep.
They're testing your video games, they're working in the cafeterias, they're driving those buses you see, carrying those Microsoft workers around. Like you say, to be a sustainable community, we have to be a complete community, and that includes all the retail workers, the service workers, you know, the people who take care of your animals at the vet, not just the veterinarian, the people, you know, the physician's assistant at the, at the doctor's office. These people are not making tons of money. The barista, the, you know.
Teachers.
The te- yeah, the teachers are at the, all the, you know, the single parents. 50% AMI does not mean mentally disturbed, substance abuse, needing support services. Neither does homelessness. I just reject that characterization. I also reject the characterization that what we have now is working. It is working for some. It is not working for all. Did you have something?
I did details question. Um, the 12.5% confused me a little bit, just in terms of how that would be applied. So if you have something that doesn't neatly divide into eighths, like, is the affordable unit applied at?
Round up or up.
Yeah, is it applied at the end, or, like, if I have a building with nine units, do I have two affordable units in that, or one?
Typically, the code does determine if you round up or round down. And in the example provided of a project with nine units, there actually wouldn't be any affordable units because it doesn't cross the threshold, um, but your point is well-taken.
Sorry, some better numbers then.
Ten.
Ten.
Ten's the threshold, isn't it?
Does that matter, does that make a significant difference?
Well, when we're talking about projects of, you know, 80, that can, that could count, but when you're talking about projects of like 300 units, it should all come out in the wash as developments occur with different unit counts.
Okay, so that's not like a big point to focus on?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thanks.
Do we want to hop into the issues matrix?
Let's go on with the issues matrix.
Perfect. And I will remember to zoom in. Okay, so, issue three is still open. There was no new content added at the 12:06 meeting, but the conversation just kept discussing uh different aspects, and conclusion was not reached if we could close this or keep it open. It's this continued conversation of what actually happens with the different AMI levels, who's paying for what, uh, what are our thresholds for viability? The most recent discussion uh asked for inputs about what parking costs and other considerations. We provided that analysis. Um, yeah. Thoughts?
You can, you can close it.
Got it.
Commissioner Noeva Kamina?
I agree, you can close it. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you. Issue 13, this was about that discussion of trying to make sure there was both the sustainability aspect of including this underlined amendment to um requiring finishing and electrification, and in addition, uh, the commissioner at the previous meeting also added that, well, this is also an equity concern, right? Like reducing the cost of utilities does reduce the cost of housing. Staff did not add this specific language, but the amendments do contain um, kind of a clause that if the market rate units have those components, the affordable units must as well.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Parna's, I, I mean, I think that's reasonable, but we'll let her address it.
Uh, for issue 15, this was a discussion about what happens when we recalibrate the AMI level of the inclusionary zoning and how that impacts the different households at different AMIs. And the, the takeaway here is, our inclusionary zoning cannot help everyone, it just is not the tool to be able to meet that enormous demand. It comes down to a policy decision of what our community priorities are and where we want to target this uh opportunity.
I liked that chart and the presentation about the cost burden at the various AMI levels, I thought that was very helpful. Go ahead.
Just want to ask one more question about that particular chart. Was that national numbers, or was that local?
King County, I assume.
That was local.
Okay, cool.
Commissioner Van Nyman, you were on this one, I believe?
Yeah, I mean, it, it answers it, and, and I guess, I, I still struggle with the idea that we're not going to be in any way increasing the supply of, of housing at the 80% level. Um, that that, that supply gets capped effectively where it is today. Um, but I mean, you've answered the question of what happens, I, I don't. I guess I'm not really clear on why we can't, um, the idea that you can't address both at the same time, that you couldn't, that you could in theory say, we're going to build, you know, um, 8% at 50% and 4.5% at 80% or something, right?
Um, I think, I think the issue is that the need is so much greater at 50%.
Oh, okay, but we are, just to clarify though, we are still, at that point, we are saying that we're capping supply at, at the 80% level, and that that group will have to continue.
Commissioner Weston has something to add.
Um, so for that one, I completely hear what you're saying. What, the way that I'm approaching this in my head is, this is where I back out and look regional. So to me, I think Redmond has um both the track record and the current leadership and the current community values to really try to meet the need of that 50%, whereas other areas may not be there yet. Um, but I do think that someone who works at Redmond is at that 80% line is likely to still be able to find more options in the area. So we're focusing our building in Redmond where we see potentially the highest need and the greatest benefit. And then at that 80%, there, still, when you look at the table, like, the majority of, like, when you look at what Redmond actually needs to do there and what um our expectations are, I'm more hopeful that someone could find an option at 80% in the immediate area than they could at 50% in the immediate area. So I, personally, when I do the regional backout, like, it looks like it makes more sense to me to focus on the 50%. But I, I do think it's a trade-off, and I, I definitely hear what you're saying, that that's a hard one.
I think there's um, a lot of discussion that we could have on this for a long time. I, I think there's three reactions uh in front of us. One is, this is just for Overlake, so it's entirely possible that in different areas of the city, the 80% AMI is actually the inclusionary zoning that, that would work best. Two, the ownership units, under staff's recommendation for Overlake, are targeted at 80% I, uh, AMI. And then the third component is that we also have flexibility in what we could do with our MFTE program. Now, the analysis put forward to you tonight mainly focuses on the eight-year, that aligns directly with the IZ requirements, but if we look at our um, 12-year program, it's possible there could be some calibration there that could also serve 80% AMI. We're still in the preliminary analysis on that component, and the multifamily property tax exemption program is under the Redmond Municipal Code, so we don't bring that directly to the Planning Commission. But rest assured, all of our analysis is looking at that tool as well, to ensure that we can create the housing outcomes that best reflect our community priorities.
So again, I'm fine with closing it, because you, you've answered the, the question.
Understood, thank you. Oh, the density bonus uh applications to other lands rather than just religious lands. So as we recall, just as a quick little background, uh, state legislature added this component, directed jurisdictions that if uh some entity that met the criteria of faith-owned property came and requested this, staff, uh, the city explores it and adopts it. The proposed language in the amendments currently still only addresses um, this component of religious lands. We did look, and it does seem possible, that we could do it on public and nonprofit lands as well. We reviewed Bellevue's code, and they do have that allowance, um, but it is, it is much more than just adding a couple lines of code to what we have in front of you. They like had shifting use tables and uh, staff can't explore that, but that might be a bit of a big task for what is in front of us right now. We would recommend that staff approaches that at a later time.
Um, I guess the question I would have then is that if it's, I guess if the comp plan simply addresses lands owned by religious institutions, that, does that automatically exclude the opportunity for these other categories until the comp plans um revised again in another several number, you know, years forward, looking forward?
Yeah, those other entities would not be eligible for it, but remember that we are going to touch 2120 again. Uh, we'll do that for the neighborhood residential, and then we'll do that um eventually for the uh downtown Marymore and citywide mixed use when those come forward as well. So that's all work that's occurring in the next uh year or so. So we can, uh, if there's room in the project schedule, um, we can certainly have the opportunity to review this again.
Close it, keep it open?
Yeah, I don't know. Here's my problem on this. So um, talking to people at the Together Center, um, and hearing what a beautiful job they did, but how many hoops they had to jump through. Um, I know we've said in the past, it's a very specific case and we shouldn't base things on it, but I just, um, like, part of me doesn't want to let it go because of that. I think we can close, but I'm, I'm dismayed, maybe that it's so hard. Um, if there was ever a way, like, if something pops up later where it's possible to bring that back, um, then that would be lovely. Yeah.
Understood, we'll close this on the issues matrix, but we will keep, uh, we'll keep searching for opportunities to explore this further. Issue 17, uh, this was about the, kind of like the value of the development capacity increases on financial returns. And we show that, you know, the, the few zones that are a little bit different in Overlake right now have slightly different benefits from the increased development capacity, about twice the residential uh for OV, and then about three times the residential for uh OBAT and OVMF. And the end result of that is the analysis showing that all those considerations together, we have the yield on cost that sits at around 4.5% compared to a variety of what stakeholders have shared, um, 4.1 is the status quo, 4-ish is the status quo.
Commissioner Van Nyman?
Yeah, it's, it's good, although, um, again, we, we had some people come tonight to say that you're not comparing apples to apples, so that you're comparing, if, the, the example that if you can already get to eight stories, and you're comparing that to five, it, it, it would show a greater value associated with that. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Absolutely, yeah, there's considerations here with some incentives uh no longer being required, some incentives becoming required, ease of getting to that extra height and extra far, it, it is uh more complicated than just straight-up doubling. Um, but the financial analysis looked at those considerations, uh incorporated as best we could, and we believe that um there's even some development costs that we did not include in the analysis, so the estimates likely skew a little bit more favorable to development. Is that right, Mike?
I agree. Yeah.
Yeah, again, you, you can, we're, we're good, you, you've, you've answered the question.
All models are wrong, some models are useful. And if a developer wants to show us their model, bring it.
Well, that's what I've continued to kind of ask for, is I would like.
They're, they're welcome to bring us their model. I'm not holding my breath.
Parking ratios and allocation of those parking stalls. This is another one raised by Commissioner Parna, and it comes down to the equity consideration of, well, okay, if it is a car-light society as an outcome, our commuters being unfairly burdened if they can't live in the community, there's, there's pieces here, but one of the ask was, um, if there was a more pointed way of allocating the stalls that became Our research found this was a, it would be tricky at best to actually implement because lease-ups do not occur simultaneously, and when folks are trying to get secure housing, it can really create shifts in timing that uh cause burdens.
Yeah, just making things more complex doesn't, without really solving anything. I thought we had resolved this the last meeting, but I guess we hadn't.
I, I thought it was last week we covered that too.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought we had closed this already.
Understood, I will double-check. But that's the end of the matrix, and I, I just want to share, I want to extend a thank you to the Planning Commission, from all of the staff who worked on this, from all of our stakeholders. This is obviously a very complicated and value-oriented and policy-challenging topic. We're very grateful that there's such an interest in this topic, right? Like, this issues matrix has paragraphs of text, and that's exciting to see. that's exciting to see. The recommendations that are going forward, we're going to ask for consensus on those options for the IZ. As a reminder, the MFTE will be updated accordingly to help move that. Anyone, any commissioner can, of course, when this goes forward, add their own kind of dissenting opinion, and that will go with the packet to council. Council will be able to review that. And then we also have in front of us, the pioneer provision is currently included. It's the first 200 units, and that's the market rate units, have a different AMI level than the next 200 units, which is a little bit deeper. And then finally, after 400 units, that's when the full new IZ requirements would go live. Now, we're also still exploring if there's a recommendation to do that, because the analysis shows the yield on cost actually is better than what it is now, so it seems like we might be able to just implement it all at once. But of course, we're here to take direction from the Planning Commission.
Go ahead.
On that one, is it optional to waive it? Like, if they wanted, like, if a developer was looking at this project and saying, like, "I'm one of the first, but I don't, I want those terms," like, is it possible to just make that something they could choose?
If the developer wanted to choose the deeper AMI for the affordable units?
Like, if they, like, instead of having the tiered approach, if they're looking at, and they're like, actually, by our analysis, it would make sense to go in and just do the full plan, for whatever reason. I, again, no one shared their models with me, so I don't know. But is that an option to, like, basically write the flexibility in and then not have to do quite so much of trying to plan what makes sense?
Yeah. And in fact, we don't actually even need any additional flexibility, because the code is framed in such a way that the unit just has to be below that level of affordability.
Okay.
Right? So, like, right now, the IZ that says 80% AMI units, if you came in and said, "Actually, we're going to do 30% AMI units," that would count towards fulfilling those requirements.
Okay. And am I remembering correctly that the reason for kind of, like, easing in this program was to get the comps to help the financing be easier? Or is that a separate case?
Thank you. The pioneer provisions are really to, generally speaking, really to help get things started, right? It's a catalyst kind of thing. Businesses and developers hesitate to be the first one in, so that's really what it's there for.
Okay, so it's more about the developers than the banks?
I suppose it, it could be both, but...
Okay.
Probably, yeah.
Any other thoughts?
Commissioner Noeva Kamina?
Ian, I was going through the, the actual amendment packet and looking at, and it was just a technicality, on page 33, 2120, 020, it reads, there's a period in, number one, all new residential mixed-use developments within the period downtown.
Thank you for catching that. We will clean that up.
And I have one more question in chapter 2157. It breaks down, and I, just clarification from my understanding, because I saw it again down in number five. So in 2157, number three, program rules and/or code of conduct, in I, it includes both the use and sale of alcohol and recreational cannabis. And then in two and three, it breaks out the difference, makes a distinction between the use of illegal drugs and the sale of illegal drugs. Is that because of that those are both chargeable offenses and they each have a charge, or, and whereas I isn't? Or why, why was the distinction between the two? And again, this is just from my own understanding.
I do not have that answer for you now. I can research and figure out why we went in that direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
And now we'll move on to the Redmond 2015 monthly briefing. Jeff Churchill.
Good evening. The monthly update will be brief, because as has been the case in the past few months, everything you're working on is Redmond 2015, so they give pretty good visibility to what's going on. I counted the number of different parts of Redmond 2015 that the Planning Commission has touched this year, and there's 27 different pieces of Redmond 2015, provided direction and advice on 27 different parts of Redmond 2015. So as it says in the memo in the Tradition of Year in Retrospectives, thank you for that. We appreciate it. And there's probably 27 more coming in 2024. I do want to highlight a couple of upcoming engagement opportunities. Three, one is there are still community design postcards available here at City Hall, at the library, and in some local businesses. People can take them, write down their ideas for Redmond, they can drop them in the mail, post it to Already Paid, or bring them back to City Hall or the library. The library has run out. We're going to bring another stack to the library here in the next couple of days. Then on January 25th at 10:00 a.m., we will be, well, Eastside For All is organizing a community design event that will be held entirely in Spanish, and so it will be similar to what was the community dinner in October of this year, but for a Spanish-speaking community in Redmond. There's registration links on our website. And then on February 10th, there will be a community design event focused on accessibility and inclusion. That's going to be over lunch, and that will also be at the Together Center, and there's more information on the website. We are really excited to be starting some new topics next month for Redmond 2015. You will be getting the complete community design element to look at for the first time, all at once, and you'll have the second drafts of climate resilience and sustainability, which is looking really good and has a lot of great narratives surrounding the policies that you saw a few months ago. So that's the update for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any commissioner updates? I have one. We're saying goodbye to Commissioner Noeva Kamina tonight. This is her last meeting as a planning commissioner. She's going to move up to the, to the big table next month. She'll be our city council member, starting in January. So thank you for your service as a commissioner, and we look forward to seeing you as a city council member.
Thank you, Chair. It has been such a wonderful experience, sitting at the working table with everyone, both commissioners and staff, and it's been a phenomenal experience. I've said this before, where I think it's a very special opportunity when you get to both learn as much as we can learn here, as well as contribute in equal parts, and what a special, very special experience this has been. So thank you all.
Anything else from anybody? Okay, then I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, and we are adjourned.